All right, well, Elise has me reading a lot of proclamations tonight.
We want to start with the presentation?
Yes.
There's nothing for that, for you.
So this is a presentation that's not.
The trees, it's on there, Trees of the Season.
Oh, okay, I see. Okay, Presentation Trees of the Season, which I'm very excited about.
So for those of you that don't know, for the third year now, we did a Trees of the Season event at the Parks and Heritage Center in this year. Well, last year we had eighty trees, this year we had sixteen. So it was quite a contest. It was absolutely awesome. From November fifteenth to January four, people visited Center for their favorite. And having a total of one thousand seventeen votes. And our winner, let me, let me preface it by saying, the top five were pretty darn close. It could have been anybody's ballgame, but our winner went out of his way to work it and I'm happy to say that Mark from Hot Dog Therapy. Oh, Mark is a hot dog guy. He's here on Wednesday and Saturday. And he, he is such a blessing to this town because not only does he sell hot dogs, but he encourages every customer that comes to his car to go into the center and, you know, experience.
Even when it's not Trees of the Season.
Always, always encouraging people to come and visit. And he's so humble that when it came down to the last few days, he was, you know, telling people, you know, if you'd like to go in and see the trees and place a vote, you know, of course, I'd appreciate your vote, but you voted on your favorite. And I go, you know, you know, he would tell everybody, vote on your favorite. So we are very happy to give him the plaque as the winner of the twenty twenty-three Trees of the Season. And then we also had a sponsor, Flooring America, that wanted to donate a basket.
I see beer.
And we are just so appreciative of Mark and he's so involved in the town and he loves this town and like I said, he's a picture here. And we totally are just happy that he won. I'll put my shoes on.
There you go. Thank you.
See, I think anybody is beating out our favorite. I, real quickly, I will say the fall trees were amazing and it was just, I was just honored to be invited. Participating, and just one other thing about the town, just being out there on somewhat of a, you know, a semi regular basis on Wednesdays and most Saturdays and, and Harvard Park and stuff. It's really fun and heartwarming to hear what the residents have to say about this town. And also people that are not residents about this town. I was just mentioning that a lot of people come by and they're just like, it's weird. And then I go, it's just the town of Oakland. They're like, this is beautiful. You know, what little history guy I know, I share with them and stuff like that. But they are, the people, like I said, both residents and non-residents just love this town. So I mean, credit to all of you. So, thank you. Okay, you guys have fun.
Okay, so now we have proclamation. We have one, two, three, four proclamations. Martin Luther King Junior Day. And I will say that we canceled our meeting two weeks ago, June twelve. So some of these are a little behind, but we will catch up tonight. So Town of Oakland Martin Luther King Junior Day, whereas the town of Oakland enjoys a richness of diversity in its population, embracing many ethnic and racial groups as part of both the town's history and the future. Whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. believes that a person's worth should not be measured by his color, culture, or class, but rather by his or her commitment to creating a better life for all by living a life of service to others. And whereas the celebration of Martin Luther King's birthday is intended as a time for all Americans to reaffirm their commitment to the basic principles that underlie our Constitution, equality, and justice. Whereas Dr. King's message of peace and service and his dream of pursuing a world free from prejudice and injustice lives on. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s dream of racial equality, understanding, service, and social justice is an inspiration to all of us. Whereas service to others is a bond that unites us as citizens, helps us to define an achievable vision by working on the common good. And whereas there are many ways to show service and respect to others, such as collecting food for those who in need, planting a tree, volunteering for a school, or delivery and serving of meals to those in need. Whereas the town of Oakland joins with others in this community to tribute, in tribute to Dr. Martin Luther King and his ideals. Okay, one. Going for two. The Town of Oakland School Choice Week, whereas all children in the town of Oakland should have access to highest quality education possible. And whereas the town of Oakland recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in the town of Oakland to be successful adults. And whereas quality education is critically important to the economic viability of the town of Oakland. And whereas Orange County is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children. In addition to families who educate their children in home, and whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but enhances the vibrancy of our community. And whereas the town of Oakland has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children. Whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise the awareness of the need for effective educational options. Number three. This is Celebrate Literacy Week. Whereas the week of January twenty-second through January twenty-sixth is designated by Florida Department of Education as Celebrate Literacy Week in the state of Florida. And whereas Celebrate Literacy Week, Florida two thousand and twenty-four theme, is Believe in Yourself, Building Resiliency Through Reading, and whereas a mission in the public schools to celebrate all students for the twenty-first century by becoming literate thinkers, writers, and readers in all facets of life. Whereas the Oakland Avenue Charter School has an intense focus on student achievement. And whereas literacy prepares students to become independent readers and thinkers who can construct and apply knowledge. And whereas literacy enables students to become productive adults who can completely globally and contribute positively to society. So, one more. Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month is a celebration of the noteworthy contributions that African-Americans have made to the United States of America. And whereas Black History Month celebrates histories, cultures, and achievements and contributions of African-American citizens. And whereas established by American historian Carter G. Woodson, the original celebration of Black History Week is observed on February twelfth, nineteen twenty-six, in nineteen seventy-six, as part of the nation's bicentennial, and the week has expanded to a month. And whereas in the town of Oakland, African-American citizens have been business owners and political leaders for many years, contributing to the local community and its history. And whereas in the month of February, it's a time for recognizing the central role of African-Americans in the United States and to promote the study of Black history all year. And now therefore I, Kathy Stark, on behalf of Town Oakland Commission, do hereby recognize February two thousand and twenty-four as Black History Month. All very important. Okay, we are now to public forum. If we have anybody who is here would like to address the commission in a very short, three-minute presentation that is not already an item on the agenda, now is your time. Okay, I have a hand up. Come on up.
There.
Tell us who you are.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Wally. I live at one-one-one-one, Whole Island Drive. And I brought my son with me. He has a little presentation he's going to give to you guys.
My name is Paul, and I live at one-one-one-one, Whole Island Drive. And I'm a great student, Oakland Avenue. And I am personally here, comes up, back, it's me. We meet at Oakland Presbyterian. In our annual, I believe, base church on September third. We would like to invite you to stand. You can come and watch, but we also want to be a part in our community race. Can I count on you?
So like you said, we're doing our first annual, it's an annual kind of derby race, but this is our first year we're doing a community event. We've invited a number of people who have agreed to come. Oakland Ave Charter's gifted group is going to make a car. Lieutenant Castro from OPB is gonna build a car for us. Jennifer at Nature Preserve is gonna do one, a couple others, Garden Theater. So if there's any representative maybe from the town who is interested, I've spoken to Commissioner Ramos. Yes, okay, if that's. And if you need to make a motion or vote on it or anything like that. There is no charge, nothing like that. The date is February third. I want to put it in the record. From eleven to eleven forty-five, we weigh in cars. And the community race will be first. That will be at twelve thirty, and then the scouts, family and siblings. If anyone wants to attend, it's open to the public. If there's any other community groups that want to join, just have them contact me. I can give you my email now if you want for the record. Pubmaster, pack nine seven eight at gmail dot com. And like I said, no cost. Anyone is invited as long as they RSVP because we're ordering pizza and stuff.
Awesome.
Free to attend and just have fun and, you know, have some bright ones.
Thank you, Ryan.
How could I? The rules, it's mostly not too heavy. It's on there. Other than that, yes, no CO2.
Eighteen horsepower on it.
Can't put an engine. Very cool.
All right. It's very, very cool. We love support, yeah. And we have a consent agenda. Does anybody have a question for comments about what's on the consent agenda? Or do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Hey, move in second. What's your comments from the audience? All in favor? Okay, now the fun stuff.
Um, ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash oh one. I'm not sure who's doing.
I can read it. Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh one is a first public hearing. An ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, admitting section sixty-two eighty-nine, sixty-two ninety, sixty-two ninety-one, sixty-two ninety-two, sixty-two ninety-three, and sixty-two ninety-four of Article Five. Golf carts, four of chapter sixty-two. Traffic and vehicles of Dakota Ordinance of the town of Oakland, providing for approval of the golf cart operation of town roadways by resolution, providing for the procedures for consideration and approval of golf cart communities and roadways, requiring golf carts to be equipped with certain equipment and safety devices, and removing previous restrictions on golf cart modifications, providing for hours of operation of golf carts on town roadways, providing for limitations on drivers of golf carts, providing for compliance with traffic laws, restrictions on golf cart use and enforcement, and providing for codification conflicts, severability, and an effective date. This ordinance comes before the commission this evening. The town commission expressed its desire, based on some resident feedback, to try to get the community more golf cart friendly and that crossing of Oakland Avenue and changing some of the golf cart code of ordinances to allow more fluency around the town. And as we open, as Oakland Park Phase Seven completes, there'll be an opportunity to take your golf carts from Oakland. The majority of Oakland is what this is going to allow. There are still some sections that we're unable to accommodate to the west. But this would allow a lot of, you could take your golf carts into, you know, Winter Garden and kind of connect the town of Oakland to Winter Garden as well. So the changes in the ordinance were reviewed by the town attorney and then the police chief has worked on this for at least six to seven months. We've provided input from all the residents that have inquired about this, and we've tried to accommodate all those requests in our new ordinances. The chief, I'll yield to you if you have any other things to add. But that is basically the gist of the ordinance. It changes the town codes to allow for more streets to be driven on and to cross Oakland Avenue as well. So it's, we feel that it's going to be a benefit and to become more of a golf cart-friendly type of community while also making sure that we're mindful of the safety and the guidelines and the safety of our residents. So we feel we've wrapped all that up into one ordinance, changed our existing ordinance, and that is what is being presented in ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh one. And if you have any questions, we'll stand. The chief is here. He can stand for any questions that you may have. But we feel, and I believe Stephanie will say the same thing, that we've reviewed this. And we feel these changes is for the betterment of the general public. So I'll have an seating on that.
Got anything?
No, I, thank you, Stephanie, for helping. So Dana, the main thing that I just want to make sure everybody knows, to begin, when this, when this is official, the first probably sixty days are nothing but education, exactly what we've been doing, education over enforcement. Just trying to make sure that the community stays safe and can operate golf carts where they want. There's a huge distinction between a golf cart and a low-speed vehicle. That is all covered, all over, literature, state statute, all over the internet. This ordinance covers golf cart, not the dress low-speed vehicles. There is a difference. And, and the, the big addition, the big change is stop signs. I know some people are not going to be pleased about the stop signs, but that is what identifies a control intersection, as you know from my previous presentations, which will allow for crossing of Oakland Avenue for people to travel through the prescribed golf cart safety zone and keep everybody safe. I'm always open to questions. If any of the residents have questions and want to discuss it offline or outside of the meeting in my office every day, feel free to call me or come to the station, and I will leave with anybody to discuss and make sure that it's clear. Thank you.
Got any questions? Yeah. On the stop signs that were put in three-way, if you might, probably on this too. I had a question today about people that are coming back east over the bridge in stop sign right there. Should there be any type of warning beforehand, or is it, I think there's gonna be a trouble people coming up on that stop sign.
We're actually gonna, yes, there, yes. There, there is an early warning sign. By law, it has to be no, no less than two hundred feet from the stop sign. And it's there. It is there. We're also, three hundred feet.
We're also gonna come back and put the word stop on the asphalt. It's not there yet.
Yeah, Thursday night, that's.
Those, those stop signs, that big intersection is totally independent of what we're doing.
I know it is. While we had stop signs, I knew that. So, you know, I drove there twice today and when I got the question answered.
Question.
Okay, thank you. Now I can answer that.
Hey, do we have any questions or comments at the table? I need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion. Click and move, ordinance two zero two four dash zero one.
It's removed and seconded. Do we have any questions or comments from the audience?
Oh, yeah. It was submitted in writing. Okay. That I pulled up and read into the record. It was actually Ryan Wally. It's here. He said this on January eighth, because this was originally in the January ninth agenda. He said, hello, my name is Ryan Wally. I am a community leader with PAC ninety-seven eight, pub scouts at Oakland Presbyterian, and also an owner at one-one-one-one, Whole Island Drive, and member of the HOA. Maybe in support of the golf cart ordinance. He said twenty twenty-three oh one. I assume he meant twenty twenty-four oh one. I would also like to propose the following recommendations for the future regarding section sixty-two dash ninety and others. Allow golf cart access to the West Orange Trail after sunset when bikes are prohibited. I know this may be accounting jurisdiction. Reduce speed limit at Bridge over Chum Pike to twenty-five miles per hour and continue. Town of Oakland, through Town of Oakland, install a three-way stop sign at Whole Island Drive at Oakland Avenue, which was done shortly thereafter. These would allow future HOA-approved golf cart communities of both Whole Island and Trailside access to downtown Oakland and Winter Garden at the West Orange Trail after hours access is disallowed. I will be making a motion for the HOA at Whole Island at an upcoming meeting to apply for community authorization per section sixty-two dash ninety-three. If approved by the commission, I believe it would pass as currently eighty percent of our HOA residents support joining a golf cart community per an informal poll on Facebook with twenty-eight respondents.
Have any thoughts on that, or just accept it into the record?
So, any further questions? I'm gonna bring it back to the table.
All in favor? All right. So Andy, we have Lake Apopka, John's Lake Outfall Engineering update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. As I stated in the December discussions that we had in December regarding the Lake Apopka outfall, the sand removal, and then you also have the canal that had some previous repairs done to it. I said I would report back on, the commission had discussed getting engineering and an agreeance that we should have the engineer look at the sand removal in Lake Apopka that we had, the council had previously approved back in November. And so we retained Kimley Horn since our last meeting. They've been out to the project site this morning. We've met with them for the past several weeks. They're going to be, I went ahead underneath my spending threshold, approved the scope of services with Kimley Horn in the amount of twenty thousand dollars after speaking with the town attorney. So they are on board. We met with this morning with the contractor, the engineer and public works. It looks like the engineering term for the sand removal portion of the project, the engineer had mentioned that, that they should have all the review of all the permits and surveys and things to get back with the contractor and work with the contractor to authorize him to begin work possibly as early as the first week in February to begin that project. We're in the process of working with the town attorney to draft a contract that specifies the specifics of this time around of what the contractor would be obligated to do based on the engineering recommendations. And then as well as, we'll draft some whole harmless agreements for the property owners that where the sand will be removed away from their docks. So with that being said, it looks like it'll be the first week in February. We're currently gonna look and see, depending on the contract, we'll determine whether or not that needs to come back before the commission based on the spending threshold, based on the minutes, the meeting minutes from November and December. So the town attorney's looking into that. And then outside of that, the project will take place once we get a contract in place with the contractor. So that is sort of the update that I have. We did have the engineer, which is a separate issue, look at the canal portion of the project. They, I did not authorize them to do anything yet, but they do have some fortification recommendations. Shall that, shall there be an issue with that in the future? And that's what caused that sand to wash out into Lake Apopka to begin with, was a breach in that canal. So that will be a whole separate project if there's something that takes place in the future. I was planning on getting a scope of services for them, but based on just the financial budgeting issues, I probably would bring that back in October into, into the council's year budget to have that study and work done. So as far as the sand removal, that's the update on that. And we'll be bringing either a contract back before the commission or approve the contract administratively, depending on the advice of the town attorney. So that is the update on that. But the engineer felt comfortable with the contractor and felt that the project, the sand removal project would be fairly simple, simple project to accomplish this time around. So that's it.
I have two items that I would like to bring forward. One would be that sent us email about a collective scope of work that is coming for other parts of the canal, which is what we believe, or I believe, would be the proper way to approach this. However, there has been a vote taken and we need to respect that. So I just wanted to bring that forward that I'm very happy about that collective approach for further work on the canal. And I also have something that I want to read into the record so that people are clear about where I stand. And I am happy about the update to this issue. I am happy that we pushed forward with a engineering agreement, even though it did cost us an additional twenty thousand dollars to an already expensive project. I'd like to see all of us move forward with respect and our positions that we have shown as a group in the past. I'm, I am so ready to be done with this issue. And I don't want to talk about it anymore. I appreciate the engineering that's been done. I acknowledge the vote that approves the work. However, there are steps to come. The next step comes in the contract for the work, and I believe that that needs to be a commission approval for the contract. Once approved, the commission, then the work may begin. I am asking that everyone respect the process and each other in the future. We have an opportunity to move forward, goodwill towards each other. There is no rush to make sure that this work is done properly and within the guidelines of the town. We need to make sure that we are approving these things as a group, not individually, and via email. I also ask that this work is done with a public purpose. That's very, very important for the town. Time for pushing our own agendas and needs, needs to be over. So I have given Elise a copy of that. Now, does anybody else have anything to say? No, what I'm talking about, sorry, at the table. Does anybody else have anything to say?
Yeah, I do. Second. One of the parts here in the Town of Oakland Martin Luther King proclamation that you read earlier, Kathy, and I agree with everything you said. One of the last parts here that was not read was using that day to collaborate on projects that using that day to collaborate on projects that will benefit our community. And that's what you're mentioning right now, benefit the community. But it also says to work together with the, with your neighbors and your community, respect others. So you're hitting on every bullet point here. And I'm, I agree with you and everything you said.
Thank you.
Twenty thousand dollars we spent, I agree. We spend it now. We should have spent it before on the first time around. For the record, I want to say we should have spent it all the first time around. I'm home with our engineer halfway through and then decide to get an engineer halfway through the buildup. So I agree that we should have had clear indication on the first time around with the contract and that we should have got engineers because we failed to do it as a board, as a staff. And whoever, you, Andy, the ex-town manager, who wasn't always too clear with everything he was doing. We now came to the next phase of completing our mission. Now with the engineer, I feel very comfortable that we have an engineer now blessing this, right? And now the next step for us to bless the contract when we get it and we all read it thoroughly and we make sure it's one hundred percent to the T. So for the record, I want to say that too much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
And I will say too, Kathy, I am much happier with the engineering that we couldn't get to begin with. And I am sorry that we blew it the first time around and I blame all five of us for that, you know, because it was a bad contract and it wasn't done. I think we were all just in a hurry to put it behind us. So I'm very pleased.
Well, history will demonstrate that that was not your thought in the beginning. So pushing for the engineering was something that had to be done after the fact. Any further comments at the table? This is not something we need to take a vote on. But I would appreciate, I know Ed, you have something you feel like you need to say if anybody else. This is something, this is a subject that we have beaten to death. It has been, hang on, hang on, Ed. It's been very, very divisive. And I am leaving this commission in less than a month and a half, and I don't want to leave this way. This really, really hurts my heart. And we should not have this kind of divisiveness at the table. We never have. And I am very, very sorry that this is the way we're going out. I think it's a big dollar issue and maybe that's where the the feelings come in. I don't know, but I'm just, I just want to put this behind us. I am so so I don't even know the words for it. I am so sorry that this is happening. I don't know how to fix it and I have to. So we just need to move forward. So Ed, if you have something to say, please come on up.
I just have a simple question. Andy, you said you met with the engineering staff that presumably there'll be a report. Report, engineering report being made available for us to see.
They'll be whatever they document and yeah, whatever the scope of services and the game plan is with the contractor, then yeah, we'll be able to, we'll be able to share that. It's all public record. Right now, they're working with, they're working with the contractor to come up with the depths, quantify the yardage. They're going to remove the sand and this location where they'll pump the sand. There's not a whole lot of really involved in dredging. But they will make sure that this time around that's done according to the contractors. Specifications, yeah. So we'll make sure that we get what we paid for.
Thanks.
Whereas the last contract was vague. And it was really, I think, not done the way that it should have been done in the beginning. And so we didn't, we didn't really get that we expected during the first project. So yeah, I'll make that, I'll make that available if you would like.
They did a good report. Anybody else?
Because I like to sit in the back. So the only thing I think that I want to say, Madam Mayor, is, I mean, I appreciate everything that, you know, you've done, but you mentioned that you, you know, you don't want to have this come up again, but unfortunately, because I, I believe this is an issue that has to do with a multi-jurisdictional area and a lot of state and federal funds need to go in this. And this is not a hundred and something thousand dollars that's going to fix this issue. Probably more like several million dollars because it's going to have to come all the way from Black Lake all the way over here. So this issue will come up again. And especially if there's a breach in the canal already, I think my question would be what happens when this happens again? Because there is a really good likelihood that when we get the massive rains during hurricane season that we get, it's going to wash out again. And so that doesn't have to be answered. That's just more.
I don't know how to answer. Answer that.
But my next thing is, is that when just as a public citizen from Oakland, when this board sits up here and I've seen you all and I've seen you vote on stuff and I've seen you make good decisions, but when you actually can sit up here and spend a hundred and something thousand dollars of our money once and it doesn't work and now again, and you don't, you just go willy-nilly and do it. I mean, that doesn't say a lot. So everybody here knows who voted for it and didn't, and everybody knows who voted against it. And hopefully that will be representative down the road.
And I am encouraged about the fact that there is some multi-jurisdictional study going on for a different part of the canal.
Right.
This. But I agree with you wholeheartedly that this is a one-off that I don't believe is in the best interest.
Well, I will, I will kind of go on the record and say, I've been on some tours of Oakland Park and everybody wants to blame this on Oakland Park. And whether it was right for the person to say it or not to the group that was there, they basically openly said, oh yeah, our contractors all throw their junk in this canal right here and one of these days we'll clean it up. Well, they won't admit that, but it was said to a whole group of people. So that kind of stuff, it's wrong and it shouldn't happen. But our little section of the canal in Oakland is not going to fix the issue because guess what? The rains are going to come again.
And nobody's saying that it's going to fix it all the way up.
Well, it may not fix it, but just be prepared because unfortunately, if the canal is not fixed and the breach in the canal is not fixed, then Mr. Christie is going to have this same issue again. So anyway, I know it's already been voted on, but
It's, yeah, this thing's been beaten to death. There has been a vote and whether we agree or not, I'm ready to move forward.
May I?
Yes.
I don't think that the decision that you all made was willy-nilly. I think it was based on the time, the information that you were given and you moved forward after, you know, waiting. This has been going on for a little over three years. And I think you did a great job with that. I think if, if a lot of people don't know, what this did was initiated Orange County to get involved in this project. And hopefully to take it on as an Orange County project so that it's not trying to be maintained by forty-seven different owners. So I applaud the moves that you made. I think it stirred a lot of other thought processes moving forward, which will reinforce the community and the whole canal all the way through. So I'm grateful. Yes. Do I benefit from it? Yes, but I've also suffered from it. So I appreciate what you've done.
Anybody else? Okay, we're done. Thank you for the update, Andy. Please put on the agenda the contract when we so that work can be done. All right. I think that's it on the agenda. So we have, Andy, do you have anything else you would like to report upon that's not been risen off?
I was going to, Jessica. Hey, if you would like, could you come talk about Heritage Day maybe and give a little quick commercial for everybody?
Good evening. So Jessica Lovejoy, Community Outreach Director. We have Oakland Heritage Day this weekend to celebrate culture and life in Oakland. The morning kicks off with a five K from the Healthy West Orange Arts and Heritage Center, which is sponsored by Healthy West Orange. Runs the Oakland Nature Preserve and since Spear Park. We have a full day of bands and vendors. And then Oakland Nature Preserve, Bring Your Wallets, because Oakland Nature Preserve is also going to have a silent auction in the gazebo. So it'll be an awesome day with a hundred plus vendors and some great talent musicians. Bring a chair if you'd like to watch the bands and we hope that you can join us. Thank you.
Thank you for, it's going to be a beautiful, yeah. And thank you guys for all that you do. You're, I know it's a busy event season right now and you guys just done that for a stop.
Thank you.
And I'm looking forward to Farmer's Market. Farmer's Day, right? Another beautiful day on Thursday. So do we have anything else, Andy?
No, the town did put out a request for proposal for a compensation and salary study that would lead us into some of the next budget years to kind of see where we fall in range with other surrounding municipalities and the local market. Also, the town's working on, you know, some sort of salary schedule, some sort of position classification plan, which are some things that we're going to look to, to the outside for somebody to come help us get those together. That will help us in our hiring ranges. That'll help us in not just, you know, not that we've done this in the past, but it'll, it'll give us some structure to how we hire. And it'll give us some structure for our employees. And as you noticed in the consent agenda, that was, that, that was a path that you adopted was a longevity bonus. While the dollar amounts, you know, aren't huge, the, you know, we kind of leaned on our employees to say, you know, do they want a plaque or did they want maybe, you know, a longevity bonus, which kind of supplements the plaque. Most people, of course, like sort of the bonus. And so that will hopefully keep our employees, give them incentive to stay here with the town longer. So they'll be rewarded at five, ten, fifteen, twenty and twenty-five years of service with five years being a hundred and fifty dollar one-time bonus. So little things like that. I think I applaud the commission for doing. They make my job easy. You know, when I first came on board six months ago, it seemed like there was a lot coming to my office and I realized, soon realized that our department heads are capable, our employees are capable. We got some of the best employees there are in the state of Florida, right here in Oakland. And then I'm a firm believer in that. Every day I come to the office, my job gets easier and easier and easier. And so it's allowing me to kind of take a look at some of these other things that we need to, you know, the personnel policy and some other things to clean up and help structure the town and keep it moving forward. I don't have enough good things to say about our staff here. So
Thank you.
That's all I have.
We agree.
Commission support is one.
Hey, Sal.
And all the events this Saturday, can't wait.
Yep. Right?
I have something to show everybody. Sal, without wanting to show this himself because this is the sign that Sal has reworked Empire with the new logo, the new colors that you all want to pray with it.
It wasn't painted and ready for it.
Right, right.
It's going to go on the parade this year for sure.
And it'll go on float for the Christmas parade. But this is the new logo. This is it. And the school, you know, we just thank you, thank you, thank you for all you do for the school.
Thank you, Sal.
One small thing of what they do for the school, their, you know, this entire Empire community. So that's where we're at. By the way, we are a school.
Yeah, we are.
And I call it.
I went to the Tri-County League of Cities Luncheon with Joseph last what was that, Thursday? Thursday was a busy day. And the chamber board meeting. So it was very nice to see all those folks from the Tri-County League of Cities and to talk about there is a class action lawsuit being floated, local or being floated in Florida about Form Six and the requirement for us to have to fill that out. We have not joined that class action suit because it's ten thousand dollars per municipality. So we do not, we're not going to spend that kind of money. We do support the class action suit. So and Andy and Joseph are going to Tallahassee next week. And we'll be lobbying for, is it a half a mil?
Six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand dollars for water.
Septic sewer.
Septic to sewer. So other than that, I don't have anything. Oh, Joseph, do you have anything? I'm sorry.
No, you covered it. You covered what I was going to cover. Thank you very much.
Covered it very well. Oh, thank you, Joseph. It was fun. And John Dallas is now the president of the Tri-County League of Cities and he's the mayor of Edgewood. So we're very happy about that. But other than that, I don't have anything else. So Joseph, are you going to take us out?
Amy will.
Close us out.
Close us out, Joseph.
I said, can, I said, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I said, well, if all hearts and minds are satisfied, let's adjourn. It is now seven fifty-one PM. See you guys Saturday.
Thank you.